We're good. Okay, so I'll open the Selectwood Budget Meeting for Town of Faceton on Wednesday, November fifth at five thirty P M at the Robert Vassar Town Hall. First item on our agenda is budget discussion for upcoming twenty twenty six calendar, which will include the first part of that will be a discussion on the town employee health benefits. And this is something that Ron had brought up. He did some further analysis on the on the budget and what we had looked at, we already selected or decided on what we were going to do as far as health coverage for next year. But one of the things Ron came up with, let me I let you explain it, Ron, and then
Well, and Sarah sent me some more.
I have that email if you want.
What's that?
I have that email that you and Sarah have if you want.
So basically, I just asked Sarah to go through and, you know, calculate the deductions for the family and stuff. So we're talking about a plan that would go up eleven percent by raising up H R A. Okay, so basically, the town has a bigger exposure, we'll call it, right? And the premiums are going down to the employee. And I'm just wondering like how we can, you know, justify I mean, an increase of exposure to the town when really the employees are paying less. I mean, anywhere from five to thirteen percent. Is that right, Sarah?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I think
You see what I'm saying? We could lower the, we could go over here and lower the town's exposure.
And that's all the town's exposure could could be potentially a maximum increase of twenty two percent.
Right, forty thousand, up to forty thousand dollars from whatever it was twenty twenty seven.
Yeah.
So I just wonder if it makes sense to just keep the premiums level. We could, it's not a huge difference. So that raises her.
No.
Um.
But no, it's not a huge difference.
So maybe it doesn't make a difference. I mean, you calculated the what was the total, like thirteen hundred dollars? So it's not, you saw the email, right, Chuck?
Yeah.
So it's not that much money. So maybe we just do. You know, it's a benefit to the employees where the premium goes down and the town they pay thirteen hundred dollars less than premium and their exposure is more. Doesn't seem like as big amount as what I actually thought it would be.
So I guess the discussion on this tonight then would be, do we do we stay with fifteen percent? Which would be a reduction for the employee contribution, or do we leave the their dollar contribution the same? And it would reduce the town's exposure by
Right, and then so the other thing I I checked on, there's nothing in the town policy that says it's a small amount, so I don't really care what to do.
Yeah.
I just had that exercise because I wanted to know.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
You see Mike?
So my feeling is I would leave it at the fifteen percent and pass that savings on to the employees.
I think so.
And I think long term makes more sense too that we stick with the fifteen percent. So we've always get that benchmark to you know, from year to year as things change.
That's what we committed to, right? I mean, as far as the town, I mean, may not be in our policy, but it's what we've what we sell.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's hard getting away from that because that is how we determine our benefits and that's how people are taking positions.
Right, yeah.
And that's year in, year out, you know, some years it goes down, some years it goes up.
Yeah.
So would we be constantly chasing it, you know, either way, you know, so if it's like on the other side, would we then bring, you know, bring our contribution up?
Well, no, that's well, what is it? But my point part of it was to do this. We took this plan that saved the employees' money and exposed the town to more versus the employee paying more and exposing the town less.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, and the history is that we don't use all that H R A money.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, it was a good exercise to go through to just determine what
So I say we just leave it at fifteen percent and take that policy that Craig suggested. Makes sense.
To end, be silver.
Yeah, so we'll just leave it at fifteen percent. Okay.
While you're there, you've got a page two of your budget. And the hospitalization line, that's that's the number that we'll be budgeting because that's the full H R A.
The one forty.
Yeah. For the employees plus the eighty five percent premium. What's a premium for the town?
Which is different than Craig's, right?
That's because Craig puts in at a hundred percent of the town.
Don't catch him because he was
Yeah, those factors in that it's only the eighty five percent.
Yeah. Yeah. What's that more? Yeah, that's it. Seventeen thousand.
So that becomes our our budget number then for the hospitals and everything, based on what we just talked about, or eighty five fifteen?
Right, then the new employee isn't on the healthcare.
So that doesn't change, that's that's the number.
Okay. Okay, well, that brings us to the next item on the agenda.
Sarah, debate this, Chuck, this time this.
That's for fact, sorry, I thought you were talking to Craig.
That's all part of the whole thing, yeah. Very good fashion.
He didn't really tell us like which one of these were in now, like.
Yeah, I decided to compare this to last year's fees. And the discrimination testing and the compliance, that's that's, we paid those fees before. This monthly fee, she's four seventy five or minimum of twenty five dollars a month.
Yeah.
That's new. And I don't, I don't know.
We we can wait until then if we want to have to add more.
Because we're keeping the same
I mean, three hundred shoulders over the years.
Whatever, keeping the same company that does the H R S.
Yeah, so it's
And is that what I
It's it now.
Yeah.
You said it was fifty. So I'm not sure this fee, I don't think we've been charged, I couldn't find it. So I'm not sure if that's just new or if that's because we're with.
I can, I can.
We should wait to hear from Craig.
Yeah, if you have questions about it.
So we're when are you meeting again? First, the twelfth, right?
Yes.
Of November, so that would give us enough time to sign that at that meeting.
It's possible, man, inside it doesn't, it's not clear on here. Just a signature.
Oh, yeah. Look back to see if says something's out of his mind every year.
I don't remember ever signing that. So and maybe it's because we're changing provider, I don't know. But he wanted it as early as he could this year, and I think if we get if we get the answers to that question and get this signed by the next meeting, we'll be okay timelines.
Sir, is we want to receive the following additional services, annual compliance package, H R H R A rollover, if we find them there at the office. I'm assuming we want to, we want to get the money back rolled into
Right.
So those are questions I think we need to get these from, had it answered because Patty probably answered them the last time.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, because I don't remember seeing this document at all in the past. So we're good, we'll we'll hold off on that one until the next meeting and hopefully we'll have answers and can sign it, okay? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Ready to move on?
Sure.
Road Department budgets. Okay. Let's see what page we're going down here to page two again. Highway equipment first.
Start on, you could start on page one.
Other anytime.
The other income, we're going to talk about the more town renting them all.
Oh, yes, okay. No, twenty twenty four, they didn't rent it.
But they did not, but do you expect them to maybe rent it next year? Or should we not count them?
Probably, I would expect them to as long as we don't get another flood. They usually do it in portions. You know, break the town up because they only do it for a forty hour week. So it's as much as they can get done in that, which is not enough time to do the whole town, so they do more of what they didn't do the prior year and that following year, so I would think that they're gonna continue on with that.
And we charged them what, three grand?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll up that by three grand then for yeah. I tell you what's good with that.
We had put we had budgeted a thousand, a hundred and seven fifty, I think, were speeding fees.
For what?
Speeding fees. Something must have got busted. So do you want to just so we didn't come close to the thousand we budgeted except for the more, do you want to just budget a three thousand instead?
Sure, okay.
If it makes sense.
Okay.
And then just the state emergency fund, the thirty thousand, I know you guys have offered that call birds.
There is the invoice form, yeah, and I I think we all agreed at least via email that we would we would get those call birds now, and I guess
Yeah, Maddie relayed that to me and I placed the order today, so.
Okay, good.
It's not quite thirty, but close.
Yeah, twenty seven.
Twenty seven, yeah.
Seven nine four. So that's what's going to be spent in the budget.
I think that was a good move to get them all in this this round.
Yeah.
So we'll take that off of the payment or the emergency funds.
Well, probably when we come to the covert.
Yeah.
We could almost pay it.
But we need to reduce it to thirteen hundred dollars or something.
We don't have to worry about that so much because like like B L C said, since there's not a sign for improvement, we don't have to. You just have to be careful not to spend it.
Okay. All right. Now to face it. So blades is first one, Josh.
Yeah, the price of carbide went up. Greater blades. They were having a bit of a shortage getting plow blades last year, so I wound up, when they did come in, I got a few extras. That's what put me over there. And then I had an ice blade that I ordered for the grater which came in after I ordered it the prior year's budget, but it came in a little late, so. I think you could stick with the nine. I won't be needing a greater blade, which is like three grand. I have a brand new one at the shop.
So now you should cover it?
Yeah.
Okay. And then diesel.
Looks like we're pretty much right on track with that. As last year's logic.
Yeah.
So I'd say fifty sounds like the right number.
Definitely.
Yeah.
I think we've kept it at fifty for quite a few years.
Yeah. We'll stay with that.
Yeah.
All right. And repairs.
Repairs. I'd like to see it at twenty five from the twenty. Things definitely pop up even if they're small and they just add up quick with the trucks and the equipment and
When when we did the new backend of that truck of the Dodge, right, put the new
body on it?
Yeah. What did what part of the budget did that come out of, Sarah?
Yeah.
Did it come out of the
Was that allied?
No, that
It was like eight or nine thousand dollars in power.
So allied equity came out of the equipment reserve, if that was it?
That was the York rate.
Ninety six, okay. I can go check, that might have come out of that repair line. Let me, I will go look at that for the next day.
It's curious because it was similarly
Yeah.
Okay.
Nineteen years. I don't remember the name of the place they had it.
Name, right? No, that was, that was the York. Pick up our ladder tomorrow or Friday.
So in outside, inside, where?
It's in the lower bed.
Oh, I didn't even see it.
The foam between the two rooms. Can we do that?
Earl's truck repair.
Now we get to handle it.
When squirrels walk in. One for sure.
No, it came out nice.
Boom, yeah. Yeah, we did, Joseph. Working with him forever.
So when they, when did that get done? Today?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah.
Yeah, so he goes, can you stuff, we had put rigid foam up in between the buildings, he said, can you always do that if we do that? I said, no, I can't. So you put rigid foam in there so the foam doesn't just go outside.
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, he could still do it, but it wouldn't look good.
Although, yeah.
And you actually used more foam.
Yeah, yeah, by now, but
No, if you didn't put rigid in, you
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's see, little baby steps.
Earl's truck repair.
The equipment is here, okay.
Yeah, it's the ninety two.
Josh, why would you think we need more money from repairs? It looks like it's gone down.
I mean, I'm already holding off on repairs and as soon as we start
Who repairing what?
Trucks. Need two windshields. Tony's truck needs something with the hydraulics which is going to put us up, and it's just stuff like that that pops up. And as soon as we start plowing, stuff should start breaking.
And we did the previous year, we spent thirty twenty five. And we budgeted thirty five, so I wouldn't have any problem going back up to twenty five to
Yeah, historically, it's been around twenty five.
I mean, we do have warranties on
These are
all of our large dump trucks. Which saves us a lot of money. But there are certain things that aren't covered under those warranties that you know, you take it to a dealer, you're paying what, close to two hundred dollars an hour?
Well, one of the things too that we well, maybe we'll talk about tonight is is in the the equipment replacement schedule and the was it not final load? You you were saying ten years and the
Yeah, it's always been ten years.
Yeah.
I even asked Michael today and he's like, yeah, we never, won't won't last.
Yeah.
So I did look back, the last time a loader was bought, he two thousand and three, and then replaced in two thousand and sixteen, so it went thirteen years.
Yeah, I don't know why the all those things take twenty years.
That's sorry.
We're nine years right now, then?
We're at nine years right now, yes.
How much did we get on trade in on the last loader? Does it? Don't have that kind of information.
Yeah, so I only brought it up, if we didn't replace the loader, we'd have to factor that in for repairs because
We've already repaired that loader once, it was twenty five thousand dollars, we've been pumping it.
Well, let's put twenty five in now for repairs and then we'll have, we'll talk about the loader and
In the the reserve, yeah.
Yeah. All right. If that's good with everybody.
Yeah.
Okay. Gasoline. That's just the pickup trucks, right?
Yeah, that's just one pickup truck.
Yeah.
It's not driving more down anymore.
What's that?
Well, it's miles on it now.
Truck still has a lot of miles on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm saying it's a lot less miles per year now.
Yes.
Want to stick with six? I mean, we're still not done to the end of the year.
Well, maybe that'd be a place, this be a place to save a little money.
I think you could do five.
Five.
Yeah. All right, let's start with that.
And I mean, honestly, eventually when we do replace that truck, I'd rather go back to a diesel pickup like we used to have and then that comes out of our fifty thousand dollar
Yeah.
diesel fuel budget, and the only thing that comes out of gasoline is
We black.
gas cans and chainsaws and stuff like that.
Mm hmm.
Which cuts that pretty much to nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I drop that for now down to five.
Okay. Then oil is the next one?
Oil, and I believe we do oil and grease out of that.
Wouldn't pull up from twenty four to twenty five and we're not even done twenty five.
Yeah, because we had been budgeting three grand, is that across the board, Mike, for a number of years?
Yeah.
Well, I'll think about the amount of equipment we have that uses hydraulic fluid, engine oil. Maintenance typically in the past has only been engine oil, air filter, fuel filters, there's I want to say seven different filters on our grater that need to be changed at certain hours and other fluids, the excavator is going to need the final drives changed, which is more fluids which all comes out of that line item in order to maintain those pieces of equipment properly.
So what where do you think this is going to end up by the end of the year?
Well, I'm holding off on doing a few pieces of equipment until January, just so I don't put this too much farther over. I had to buy another case of grease, which is a couple hundred dollars.
So if you're sliding some stuff into next year, we're already
It looks like it's got to go up a little bit.
Yeah.
At least five hundred if right, I mean, are we gonna, let's let's say you did it, well, let's say he did what he should be doing this year, it'd be four thousand.
Probably.
Do you know what I'm saying? So all we are is kicking
I mean, some of these air
If we don't fund it.
Jump it from three to five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Four, it sounds
Four.
Four thousand.
Shoot for four.
Yeah, yeah. Other parts. Is that all the filters and all that other?
So, yeah, that's the filters. Any miscellaneous parts and pieces that we need for trucks.
It's interesting, we spent seven thousand in twenty twenty four and then we're at forty seven hundred this year. Is that a place we can cut back a little bit?
I'm not sure what entirely he put through.
Part of that is the difference between
Seven thousand.
Signing. Because it seems like between oil and other parts they, between twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, they're pretty close if you add them together.
So he might have put like grease and stuff through the other parts. I just kind of figured
It's about eleven hundred difference.
If you add them together.
Yeah. So that might just be assigning different accounts. It's hard to know.
Will we drop that a little bit? I mean, realistically, I don't want to say you don't feel comfortable.
I mean, you could drop it to six. Take five hundred off of it.
Okay, is that fourth for everybody? That's a first shot at it. And rental?
Rental. I'm going to use some of that this year. I have to grind those stumps down along Center Faceton before somebody hits them or wing hits them or something.
So you know, we didn't spend any on twenty and twenty four, but we doubled it to five.
Yeah, I don't know what we were anticipating there.
Roller rental.
Roller.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And we, did we rent a roller? But it was
We rented a roller last year.
In twenty four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't see it on there.
It wouldn't have gone there because it was for the flood.
Yeah.
It would have gone
Oh, gotcha.
We didn't rent a roller this year. I was going to. Things packed down fairly decent, plus some of the hills I wanted to roll. They were logging up there and it was going to tear it up either way, so I I figured that'd be like burning money. You know, between getting a piece of equipment delivered grading it, rolling it, having it torn up, then not having a roller because it went back. They just finished up like on Dunbar today. So
Well, good.
Yeah.
You know, I think North Faceton looks good.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
It just takes more time to pack down and it gives more opportunity for imperfections to arise in the road. Rolling it is great, and if you have one, I I definitely would use it. But it's, and as dry as it was, it was hard to, with no moisture. You can chloride it and roll it, but it's still probably going to get loose again. It just didn't work out for us this year.
So what do you think you'll have rentals for next year then?
I'd be interested in possibly renting a hammer on an excavator or some ledge issues on Center Faceton and Hugh Vassar Road. Just so we're not beating on our machine too much, trying to get stuff done.
Yeah, there's some that stick right out there.
Yeah.
True Vassar. Yeah, I can't believe all the grit, grit you get there.
Yeah, it's rip rat.
It's, it comes off very shally, sharp.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It it breaks apart easy and right until you get into a hard section and then
Would you, when you say rent, would you hire with an operator or do it ourselves?
Do it ourselves, rent another machine with a hammer on it.
Yeah.
We don't want to put a hammer on our machine.
No.
Yeah. Just checking.
No. I haven't really checked into pricing on that, between that and possibly a roller, I would prob, I would stick with the five grand.
If you hire a chipper with an operator from somebody else, about two grand a day.
Yeah.
With an operator.
Yeah.
So we leave it at five?
I would.
All right.
And after next construction season, when we do this again, we'll we'll know exactly where we stand.
I hope we don't get borrowing any more flooding.
Tires.
Tires, we dropped down from
Yeah.
the prior year because we had some in our possession.
Yeah.
I think we're going to need, yeah, we're going to need to up that again back to at least where it was the prior year.
The eleven?
Yeah.
But we only spent under eight hundred and eleven.
Yeah, we typically spent around eight.
We have one is that the front tires on the back, oh, that are getting pretty bad that need to be changed. There's a few sets of wheels on our dump trucks that are starting to wear on the beads where it becomes sharp and starts to cut the bead of the tire. So I have a feeling some of those are going to need to be replaced. Those add up pretty quick.
Mm hmm.
So like you said, we spent about eight thousand.
Yeah. Six to eight.
Six to eight.
We could do eight.
Let's do, let's do. Let's do, let's do that um.
Worth a shot, you know, I mean, you don't wanna.
Yeah, cuz we'll be doubling the budget.
Yeah.
Line by doing it, but I mean, if if we need to spend the money. And that's what we spent the prior year.
Yeah, so we've already gone up.
Go with eight.
Five.
The total for equipment is.
We got up ten percent.
What is it, Sarah?
Uh, total for equipment is a hundred and twelve thousand.
A one twelve. Okay.
You mean by by upping those budgets? Yeah, that's about.
Just under ten thousand.
Okay, moving on to the garage, electricity. We are we budgeted those already?
No, I just threw those in there based on um numbers and not seeing.
To what we budgeted last year.
And the only question, so the garage door, I did take that out of the um garage re- reserve.
Yeah, how much was that?
Six grand.
Yeah, that was an upper money, was it?
No. You know, and that included weather stripping the other side that hopefully we tightened up a little bit.
Sixty six hundred and fifteen for that.
It's really not that bad.
That power. Lot of the reserve too.
That was difficult to get done, I think it would be harder.
The only question is whether or not you want to keep the maintenance at the same.
I think the garage doors is is right where it should be, you know, it's like a improvement. You know, the fifteen hundred could come out of there, right? The bower.
Yeah.
So uh for electricity. It seems like we're spending around eighteen hundred. A year, is that right, Mike? What what you're saying, maybe we could drop that to. To two thousand?
Yeah.
Um, for starter there. And then the heat looks about. Would be about right, we're spending that amount this year.
If we get another bill, I can we can revisit it.
Probably go over, right?
If we, yeah, if we get more.
Yeah, they'll fill it, whatever.
Maintenance and repairs, looks like we might be able to drop that a little bit. I mean, we spent.
So if I add the fifteen hundred, that'll take the the actual to thirty seven, around thirty seven.
And I do have a couple of the things that we wanna do there, you know? Probably really, there really wouldn't be reserve items.
They would not.
Yeah, there's some doors there that, I mean. Use some TLC. Put windows in the uh the uh where they keep the dump trucks. Those windows, I mean, they're just sieves.
Yeah, there should be, if we do the three up front. And if we wanna do the three down back, otherwise.
And I.
I know Kerry Hale's gonna supposed to be doing some electrical you.
Through your insurance list. And then he's gonna give me some numbers to maybe upgrade the lighting in the lower half and.
Yeah.
But um I was thinking that uh. Windows. The the door, it's a door that's pretty bad, not to repair the door, but weather strip and stuff. What was the other thing I was thinking? There's small things that repair, I I don't know, we could drop it if you want, but I think that. What?
Sixteen's. Like a good number, you're always gonna have little things there.
Yeah, and we haven't been doing them. You know, I'm happy to work on it, right? I mean. We really haven't spent that much this year. I I think we could keep it at six.
Keep it at six?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we spent five in twenty twenty four. Though we get stuff still to do, so if it shouldn't come out of reserve, then this is the place to keep it in here then.
Like to fix that drain.
Yeah.
Water runs over the floor. You know?
And when we do that, we have underneath that new garage door, that concrete needs to be fixed too. Windows, like you said, that other door.
I I think six could be good. We get a little ways to go to really tighten it up. I'd like to uh sometime look into the system where we take the air in the top of the building and suck it down back down to the floor, yeah. Yeah, it'll just push the cold air up.
Just have all the heat go up the roof.
Fans don't really work.
So they have all the heat go up the roof.
Right. And the fans don't really work, you know, it's it's too big a building. And that you get those, they're called, they're called, excuse my language, but it's called a big ass fan, uh but they're so expensive. They're like four or five grand a piece or something. So there's a simple, uh anyway, uh looking at it, looking at it with the fan, right, just to push the air down.
Yes.
Another thing to save heat.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we'll stay with six on that. And telephone looks like it's about the two grand.
Stay off the phone, Josh.
I don't, I try not to use it.
Well, last meeting, he was giving away his cellphone, now he's giving away the garage phone too. So we keep that at two then?
Just a standard, I mean, you can't move that one.
Okay. So next item is highway supplies calcium.
Calcium, let's see, so that total you're looking at right now is three loads of calcium fluoride. So. It went up a little bit. Put us over.
Yeah. Is that a good number?
We get less than, oh, two thousand twenty four because we didn't do anything.
They were washed out.
But we didn't know it when we set that budget.
Right.
So there's something different.
No, we had an off cycle, I thought we had gotten. A load right before, so we.
I think that was probably. Yeah. Yeah. So what do you think, Josh? Was sixteen? Still a good number?
Yeah, I I think sixteen will work, I might be over again just by a little bit.
That's probably the stuff you lost.
Hey, they gave us another tank, let's just be happy that I didn't have to go buy a ten thousand dollar tank.
Like Wasteful still has some, right?
No, we got it back. I have some of their salt though.
All right, sand, is that all the color, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what they cost to.
That's what it costs to screen sand this year.
More than we normally do. No, or they're just more expensive now.
So. I never saw their actual bill, is that their total bill? So.
So if any of that's gravel, we would move, we could.
Some of that's tailings.
So that should go to construction.
Yes. On the slips that I gave you guys, the little yellow slips, it has the total yardage of sand. And then it had the total yardage of stone.
And where does the stone go in the budget?
It comes out of the construction reserve.
Yeah.
We have two, which is on the budget is eight six. Eight oh six. Okay, so I'll move, I'll figure that out.
So we're removing the tailings, right?
So do you want to make those budgets finalized and put in there?
The last two years I need to put in.
I mean, I have all my personal stuff at work. Uh, you know. I'm gonna be at work forever. Three more years. Yeah, I'll be seventy three years.
I got twenty more.
You go forever.
I got twenty.
Yeah, you're gonna get your week of vacation this year.
You do? You take it away, no.
Review the town plan.
You gotta review that policy.
The sand will be maybe around thirty one thousand approximately right now.
Okay.
The thrill thirty one.
Approximately, yeah.
Go with that number? Although we don't know if it's gonna, is he gonna go up again next year?
But did we do more?
We did five thousand one hundred and forty eight yards, I believe. Which is, sometimes it's, we're a little bit, it's hard to nail it right on the head, you know what I mean?
Thirty two thousand, thirty three?
I just do thirty two and see where we're at.
Okay.
They usually, they treat us pretty good as far as. Getting in here and doing it and they're fair with their pricing, I think.
Yeah.
But it is new owners, we used to deal with Fred McCullough and now it's Ian McCullough and Matt Dwyer, so. Things are bound to change a little bit.
So we'll go with thirty two. Other supplies, looks like it runs around a thousand a year, huh?
What is that? Paper towels and toilet paper and.
Yeah. Yeah, which I have another invoice for that and the traffic. That's that's expensive.
Yeah.
Maybe we should order it through you where you get the water. Because going love Bizby's and all, but go out there, you get paper towels. Toilet paper and it's.
Even if it's WB Basin or something like that.
Last time we got it from WB.
We get, uh, we get some from a G sometimes cuz they're local.
Remember you said, but then we got the last thing, we was all from the WB.
Maybe it's cuz Bizby sells good toilet paper.
Well, that's true, when you get the case toilet paper, it's gonna be a big difference.
Probably.
I'm indifferent, the small.
Angel soft at business.
So you wanna say the thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, wow. Right around between twenty two and twenty four hundred bucks roughly, I think.
This is thirty five, probably decent number.
Yeah.
So I read twenty two, it was twenty two loaded the uh forty four B. Fifteen, thirty.
That's a significant increase versus last year.
Really?
On the price per ton.
So we probably use less.
Yeah, we've been using less.
Yeah, because the cost of salt goes up, we keep the same budget and try not to go over, but it. It's hard not to, I mean. Most people laugh when I tell them what we spend on salt.
What is?
So what do you think?
But thirty five last year, twenty twenty four.
Gonna spend thirty six this year.
Or more.
No, I mean. Forty four, it's about.
If we don't have to get more before January one.
Yeah, are you out? I mean, you had two loads.
I got two loads and I can, you know, back and go really fast.
But what are you thinking then, based on that, Josh?
I'd go forty.
Jeez.
Warren's is a hundred and ten.
What?
Warren's salt budget's a hundred and ten.
But we've been at forty. No, act- in actual.
Oh, actual, but we keep it at thirty five?
We went down cuz we were gonna use less.
We might use less if I can't get it.
Is there a shortage?
That's what I've been told by a few people that it's gonna be hard to get and there's a shortage and but.
Didn't help us cuz you only get so much a ton.
Right. I can't stop pilot.
So forty is a reasonable number. All right, well, that's good with everybody else, we'll. Put that in there. And then we go to the reserves.
The first one is road re-treatment, so we must have funded another forty in twenty five, is that it?
What we have currently in the reserve. Fifty six. So what do we have planned for next year?
So Josh, should you get any questions on? No, uh, that film? That would probably, yeah, that could come out of this reserve.
Again, uh, you're looking between sixty five and seventy five hundred dollars per day. So when I talk to them and I also talk to Warren because they do a lot with Nycom, um. They said on a on a decent road, they can get about two miles a day, which is two miles both sides, both planes. I would think we'd only need them for a couple days.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that we do it, I just thought it. That we could save, if we could save.
I think Brad Hale, it would help.
Yeah.
North Face Road, if you could get two more years out of it for.
Right. I mean, at this point, German Flats. Is too far gone. To do it, but moving forward, once it's done again.
Hitting it at like year three, four.
Keeping the water out of those cracks, definitely gonna benefit.
That's why I was just thinking Brad Hill, you know, I mean. It's just be worth. How much pavement on Brad Hill?
I don't know, who this comes as on it?
Mile change?
Maddie, how far from the Chinese food place do you have?
And how much did you say they can, they can do a couple miles a day? And how much is it?
Between sixty five and seventy five, Andrew Warren told me seventy five hundred dollars.
So a a day?
A day.
So we have a hundred?
Yeah, but if they have to like router out the cracks and stuff, that adds a couple grand.
That's because they waited too long.
Per day.
Right, I would guess, so I don't know, I mean, I don't know, what I'm, what I'm thinking though is that. If in this reserve, if we keep it going for paving. Then we should make sure we're not, we don't want to take money out of paving to do this, so like. Then we should make sure we're not, we don't want to take money out of paving to do this, so like. All kind of focused at the same. Same thing, yeah, what I'm saying would be, we still wanna make sure our paving budget is up there where we can actually pave.
Right. The other thing, uh, question two is number nine. Slumping again. Eventually, it's gonna be down in Guss's old path. I know.
Well, we're building money.
Is there anything we should be doing with that?
And that's.
I don't. We had an engineer twice, I believe. And I don't know.
We haven't met this budget with.
Yeah. Well, I think that it was the fighting.
But there's nothing really.
The landowner at the time gave us permission to move the road over. He has since passed away. I don't.
So I guess.
Moving it off that edge would probably be the best case scenario, but that might, that option might be gone. We're just talking about number nine and you know, whether or not we need to do anymore on that one. I mean, you can keep shimming it, it's just, I mean, there's gotta be a few feet of blacktop right there.
Oh, yeah.
The weight alone.
And when we end up doing it in an emergency, we pay right through the nose. Oh, yeah.
It's rough coming down through there, it's hard even with a dump truck, you know, you're trying to.
Just drive on the other side, that's what I do.
When you're trying to plow and salt. Okay, sorry, I had, I got a collision because I had to drive out around where it wasn't plowed. It, it, you know, you break traction when you get rocked up and down through there. And it's not fun when you come flying out on the seventeen, people don't like that.
We probably should be proactive. Yeah. Still have those engineering studies that were done.
Sure, there's somewhere.
Yeah, maybe we could find those.
I, I think in that engineering stud, it was funny, there were like large dollar ones, but. Then he had a recommendation, then it was just like dig it out and get rid of the water. You know. Yeah, and that's probably what's happening, you're just getting water pumping under that, it's just. It's going down the hill. Yeah, cuz it's not, you mean, it's not like it's a, it's not a real slide, it's a slump, it's not, you know, really steep on the backside of that. You know, it's just the whole thing under the road is gone cuz there's, there's water under there. I think in the board logs, there was water like flip under the road.
How would you do that, Mike? How?
You just dig it out and put drainage in it under it in stone.
Basically a holding base.
Yeah, exactly.
Close the road from, you know, the apron by that. First house for a month.
Weeks, probably. Couple of weeks.
Remember, there is a house halfway too.
You know, if you did the top one first.
Right.
And then just have to do that bottom section, close it for a short period where they couldn't get in and out. Cuz otherwise above the one, the main one, you're not, you know, everybody can go around from there pretty much.
Yeah, I mean, we have plenty of material, as far as standings, to put in there and put drainage in there.
Yeah, would we consider that under road construction?
Yeah. And then you're gonna have to pave it again over, but. I mean, any of that stuff that we, any of the blacktop we dig up and dig out of there and get broken up, hauled to a pit. I can run that through a crusher into our gravel.
Yeah, you know, and, and honestly, I think doing it is, I think we paid eight grand to fill that in. Yeah. And we've done that in, in, in two years.
Yeah, and the final product wasn't very great.
No, cuz they did it inside of what they did the last time.
Yeah.
It was like. So, yeah, I think we should consider that, we, is that some of the town would do or we put out our fee or?
It's a project. It's a project, it is gonna take some time, plus hauling. I mean, just hauling along from one side of town to the other takes some time and it's almost easier on the trucks to. You know, go down.
Hold root a hundred for sure.
So that's, that's time to zoom in, but we are gonna have four guys and we do have a machine, I don't see why we can't.
So.
Do it. But that would come under road construction though.
Right, yeah. Exactly. What other?
Except we had the paving afterwards. So we've got a hundred fifty six grand in load re-treatment now, do we wanna continue?
Oh, we need to. We need to be getting that up. We, I think we do. Yeah.
Keep it at.
I mean, or if not even. Think about it, costs ninety to go from the school to Barton. Right?
Yeah.
Gonna cost us a hundred and fifty. Three, seven, five. To, to finish. Or four. To finish the rest, right?
Yeah. And we do it all next year?
If we could get a grant. But I'm sorry, well, I think what you're leading up to is we need to keep on funding that very strong. Yeah.
So at the eighty, eighty level.
One fifty six. Cuz next year we'll probably be able to get our paving grant, right? Cuz we have to sit out.
I, yeah, I think so.
And, uh, and we would take probably a little bit of paving for this. Other, we put it on the road. So you think for another forty? So you're thinking?
What's that?
Another forty for the.
Up it from eighty to one twenty?
No, no, no. I'm saying, no, no, I'm saying, sorry, we put eighty back in again.
Again, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I'll have to read this, I think it goes from forty to eighty, but.
Oh, yeah, from the previous year. So we do eighty again?
It's two thirty.
Okay. So when the equipment user.
North Face and Road.
We have a hundred thousand.
For paving?
Yeah.
Like a long, a while ago.
Yeah.
Jared, do you know that, what we get for?
I don't remember.
Isn't there like a cap?
For some reason, I thought we were still a few years out from paving grant.
So we got, you guys got a grant for that?
For.
The first time.
North Face and.
So you, we saved that two years in a row. Remember when?
Well, it was, it was, we got a grant for the whole thing and we did the, the first coat and then. Replant, recommendation first coat and then did the top coat following year.
And that was only four years ago. Three, actually. When it was done. Um, but could see when the last grant was.
It was still, we still need to replace the culprit at the school too. What does that come under? Waiting for some grant to appear.
All right, so we, we'll keep the road re-treatment at eighty. The equipment transfer, we have a hundred thousand dollars in there now.
We've got a hundred pounds, so we.
And this is where the loader comes in.
Yeah, what's the, what's the allied equity one?
That's the York rate.
Okay, gotcha. That girl's truck is the best.
Yes. Correct. So I reached out to John Deere, um, and I guess some other numbers on other equipment, uh, other loaders. It was actually more money than John Deere. They. Got us down to two hundred and two five forty four before trade, uh, he hasn't seen our trade yet. But he's thinking somewhere in the seventy thousand dollar range. So you're looking about one thirty. For a loader, uh, I asked him to price a second bucket. For it, a tooth bucket, cuz working in our, in our gravel pit, trying to dig into bank run gravel with a straight cutting edge is a bit rough. Try, you go into there about, try to put you through the windshield, so teeth help break that up and help you do a little better job. Uh, but he said that was between eight and ten grand for another bucket. The benefit of sticking with John Deere is we have forks and stuff that are interchangeable. With our loader. So if we stick with that, you know, we've.
Yeah.
Acquired forks, I'd like to acquire a, a second bucket that. We, we hold on to going, moving forward in the future.
So Josh, she says one twenty five after the trade in?
Uh, right about one thirty. After the trade in. After the trade. Yeah. That's what he wrote and. He emailed to me. So with the other bucket, you'd be about one forty.
So what's coming up after the loader? A different pickup truck that you want.
I got pricing on that too. On what? Another pickup. Okay.
But not the one that's due.
No, because we put a body on it and I was trying to push that a few more years.
Has less mileage, right?
Yeah.
And we can always reuse that body, right?
Well, I mean, you wouldn't get nothing for the truck, trying to get rid of it without it.
It might be worth keeping about ten thousand of the body. Right.
I wouldn't reuse the body.
No, but it's not that truck. It's no, yeah, yeah.
No, it's the pickup and, you know, I think.
Slated for twenty nine.
I think on, on the pickup truck, trying to push it past five years. Pushing that, trucks already starting to get pretty rusty, even on the bedsides, up in the corners and it's just. Issues after issue with that truck. And of course, it's not under warranty, it's got seventy six or seven thousand miles on it.
So in a couple of years, we're looking, well, the next budget season, we're looking at a dump truck.
Yeah, twenty twenty seven. So the deal with the dump trucks now. I can get the cabin chassis pretty reasonably quick, getting it built by the bodybuilder. Takes over a year. So you have to buy the truck, get the truck here before they'll schedule you to build it. So turnaround on that's gonna, you know, if you get a twenty seven, it might not be ready till late twenty eight.
I think for next budget.
I'm just thinking in terms of putting enough money aside this year and next year to, to cover it, you know?
Well, then two years later, we have another one.
Yeah.
Yes. And two years after that, we have none. And a backbone. I, yeah, we don't wanna go under a hundred twenty five.
I'd continue pushing the backhoe back.
Yeah.
The thing, it needs some tightening up, some service here and there, um, which we're looking into. Getting it serviced properly. But it's pre emissions, it runs good. I just continue pushing that back.
So which, which one is that?
Our backup.
Oh.
Cuz it's on a twenty year rotation according to this, which I just continue pushing it back.
So if we funded again at one twenty five. We buy a loader at one thirty, not gaining anything. I mean, we're gonna. But maybe it's enough, then we don't need to gain. I think we need to gain a little cuz we'll probably, you mean, it sounds like we're probably gonna do the loader and the pickup next year. The pickup was what? Sixty five, sixty seven.
With a plow, seventy one. Seventy one. And that, that, that's before trading, you know, but still it's.
What about all that incidentals like the radio and all the things that?
I can pull the radio out.
But that's the trade, you know, that's where we're gonna.
I can pull the radio out, reuse the current radio we have, um, I would just want it. I want them to come install it cuz who knows where you drill in vehicles nowadays, so.
But, yeah, the trade would be your cushion.
And what would the dump truck go for now? The fully rigged. Which one? The one that would be coming up in, in twenty twenty seven.
He spent ninety five thousand a year ago.
Really? And that included the body?
No, I don't believe so. I think the body is close to that.
Can be. This one is, uh, two thousand twenty. Yeah, two thousand twenty four coming in. That was it.
I can double check that number.
Doesn't seem right. Maybe that, well, that's minus true, uh, but we don't think we got big trades for any of.
Yeah, cuz I thought we were over two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
I don't remember what the trade was. I, I'm, I'm pretty sure just that the body alone.
Costs that much.
Is supposed to that much at this point.
I'm looking ten different, that's what it costs.
So if, if.
Did the trade is the difference?
The twenty twenty four Western Star?
Yeah, yes.
So it looks like from Charlie Boys. It was a hundred and eighteen.
Yeah.
And then the new plow truck fit up, it's nine to five.
So that was. What, what is three ninety five?
Two hundred and twelve.
Yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd probably say ninety fifty. So if we budgeted half, say a hundred thousand dollars to put aside toward that purchase next year. And seventy one for the pickup and a hundred and forty for the loader. Let's see, that brings us to seven eleven. Three hundred and eleven thousand, we've got.
A hundred in.
A hundred in. So. We need another two hundred thousand. So we'd have to up that one twenty five to two hundred.
Well, we can see where it comes out in the end. Right, we need two years for that too.
Yeah.
We, you know, we'll do part of it next year and then the. And then that's gonna be, we're gonna pay for the truck. And then pay for the body outfit nine months later.
Yeah. So should we?
And what's the one that's going out, what?
International. Twenty twenty.
How is that doing?
All right.
Yeah.
It's holding together, um.
Like, cuz the last ones we had when they were leaving were.
Well, if it's a salt truck, it typically gets, it goes faster for sure, having. All blacktop. Um, which is the twenty twenty four currently that is set up for.
Also, yeah. I think we gotta, we can, we can up it, like what you suggest Chuck. And then we just have to work the numbers in the end, right?
Yeah. I think like, like next year, yeah.
Seventy five.
What are you thinking, Mike?
Like one seventy five and this for twenty twenty six and then. We'll have to see where it goes. One twenty seven with that truck.
Yeah, cuz then in, in this year's number, we get the pickup and the loader.
We have that covered right now.
Yeah.
If the one seventy five, we would be at, uh. Two seventy five, the reserve. Yeah.
Yeah.
And one thirty for the loader puts us into two forty five, what was the truck sixty?
Seventy one.
Down to seven, one seventy five toward. The, that would be in, starting out to two thousand twenty. Six, seven, six budget, okay.
So one seventy five and then we adjust next year as we, as we need to. All right. Um, another thing you talked to me about at one point in time was like the Conex box, the storage box.
Yeah.
Putting one of those at our shop to store tires and hydro seat and everything in.
We got it, we should turn that building off, that would build enough the end, it's nothing but liability. It's got full of tires. Conex box, they're cheap.
Yeah, forty footer. I don't know. Whatever, I have two of them at the store, at the snow field building. But I figured this was. But I figured this was the time to bring that kinda stuff up, I don't know.
We'd buy it, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's. I mean, they're too grand. Two to four.
Find a spot for that, you know, I think that's. Or um the budget will fund. As in somewhere home decide to do it.
And typically like purchasing tools and stuff that we need, what does that normally come out of for line item? Just need shop tools, wrenches, stuff like that, that.
Generally goes under other supplies.
Other supplies? Yeah. Looks like we could.
On the operating side, other supplies, okay. So does that change that number?
We budgeted a grand for that. When was the last time you bought tool?
You know, and you know, we could um. They've come in the town's garage reserve. Some ways, you know, the Conex box.
The Conex box, yeah, I think tools should, yeah. Yeah, we should be.
Other suppliers.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
We should, we should think about that in that.
Yeah. We should. Unfortunately, not to jump back to that, but.
But where, so where under highway supplies or highway equipment? Are there other parts of the other supplies?
Other supply. That were, that's what you're thinking, right?
Doesn't seem like you'd buy much of anything of those kinds of.
We just need to agree where to put it.
Yeah.
And when. They get itemized by Josh, he needs to know where to put them.
Yeah.
So.
So what are you thinking?
What are you thinking and?
I'd like to bump it to. From one to three. What uh what are you thinking for tools, wrenches, sockets um? I mean, wrench sets alone or? Hundreds of dollars.
But we we do need them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're very limited on what what we have at the moment. I took all my tools out of there and took them home years ago. Though, cause they come up missing.
Yeah, you should bring your tools to it.
Right now, highway supplies is up about fifteen percent. Just the all those things, the calcium sand. The other and so. That's not, not including bumping up other supplies.
Well, we wanna give you the proper equipment to. Do all our repairs.
We have to somewhat top forty budget.
So why don't we, for now, earmark that in there? And. See where things. Come out.
Where where you?
Other supplies.
Fifty, fifty, eighty? What are you thinking, Mike?
Well, I'm saying put it in the margin. As three.
Okay.
And then let's do our run through and see. How far we're up. Calls about.
Alright, so just make a note on that to review it. Okay. Alright, so what's next here um? Road construction, we got forty-two thousand in in reserve right now.
Is that what gravel comes out of? If we have crushing done. So.
So that'll actually drop, that forty-two will drop about five thousand once I take the tailings out of there. So we really will have around thirty-seven thousand.
Road construction, we do a forty-two balance.
Uh it will be thirty-seven, cause I have to take tailings.
I got a price on. Crushing gravel. For this upcoming year. Uh through McCullough, having them come in and. Do ten thousand yards, you're looking at eight bucks a yard.
We really paid that budget down fast this year, we took a hundred thousand of it, seventy.
It's the hauling.
Very one fifty-nine down to forty-two.
So where does that work out to, Jeff?
Eighty grand. For what? Double, ten thousand yards. Out of our bet.
Is that the only thing? Or we're talking about uh other work like number nine, right, that would come under road construction as well?
That would be. Out of that as well.
So we get eighty for hauling.
Eighty for making ten thousand yards of gravel.
And then whatever we would think for number nine and then whatever else. Is in there.
So if we put forty-five in again, we're only gonna be at eighty-seven. Minus five. Eighty-two, like eighty thousand is what we'd have in that. Reserve.
Yeah.
It's been quite a few years since we've. We we've only crushed ten thousand yards of gravel since, once since I've been here in ten years.
Yeah.
And why and and why would we question again? Ten thousand yards? To use on the roads? Yeah, but I'm saying if it's been in once in ten years, what?
Why, why this year?
How long? How long is that?
We're out.
No, but how long are they there to do that?
How long are they there to do that?
Like, is that their minimum? Are they gonna maybe for five thousand?
From what I'm told, no, they like to move in for a minimum of ten. But I haven't heard that directly from them, I can ask that. It's just. Typically, that's what we've done when we have them brush gravel is ten thousand.
So you're gonna straighten me out, so they came in ten years ago, well, crushed ten thousand.
And it's lasted this long.
Lasted this long?
It wasn't. It was within the ten years I'd been here.
What is it, what is it um?
And what are we paying for the granite?
It was eighteen fifty a yard.
And we trucked it, right?
Or hire it, or we truck it, yeah.
We should be trucking more ourselves, the fourth guy.
Eighteen fifty cents. Right, but somewhere, yeah. I'm pretty sure it was eighteen fifty. So it is a significant savings, taking it out of our pit.
Well, yeah, but may- maybe it's, you know, do five. If they'll do five, then then buy. You know, two.
Right.
Of the granite, cause I think the mix, the mixing of those two. Really, you know, North Face and looks pretty good.
It's better surface, I think.
Yeah, I mean, on the. Like I've said before, on the higher traffic roads, you know, center facing. You know, leaving North Face and all the way around to the end of center, that would be. Great to do with the better material. The secondary roads. I. Can get away with using what we got. But unfortunately, at the moment. We don't have it. But it takes quite a bit. Of permitting and setting up. The crushers to do that ten thousand yards, I mean. They bring in two crushers. One's a breaker, the jaw breaker. And. Get rid of some of the larger material we have, all the asphalt in the middle of the pit will go. And quite a few of the large tailings are gonna go right directly into gravel.
Well, can we ask them if they they'll do less than ten and if they're. If they're like, we don't, we only do tens, then that's the number we have to start with.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So you wanna come back to this one once we get. A little more information on that.
Be well the trucking lot. Fifty-one, sixty-one.
Is there anything else, Jeff, in that line items we would have just budgeted for?
No.
So once we get the. Number from you, we can.
Yeah, I can find that out. I'll call Matt Dwyer and ask him.
Do you wanna do town garage reserve and cover?
Yes, yeah, we should do that before we go, so we'll come back to the eight oh oh six, so. When we get the numbers from Josh. Uh town garage reserve, we've got fifty-one, almost fifty-two thousand in there.
I think ten will do for now.
Keep it at ten.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna spend. Um we, you know, it'll increase, we won't spend ten grand a year. It's just a matter of what we want, think we wanna do in the future. Just keep it.
That makes sense. And the culvert reserve um, let's see, what we got in there?
Five, six hundred bucks or something.
Went over?
You gotta fund at least that, three twenty-five, thirty-two.
So what if we put in? So you you should be all set for publics to next year though, right? Or will you need more beyond what you just ordered uh?
I might need more than what I just ordered.
So we need like five hundred to cover the shortfall or three.
Well, we spent fifteen this year, we just bought thirty. We put in a bunch of culverts this year, right?
We spent. Yeah, we spent fifteen.
So actually, we've bought forty-five thousand this year.
Yeah.
If we spend, put the thirty on top there.
We still have a few of those ones, but those are.
No, actually, we bought twenty-five this year. So then it lowers this reserve this year, so.
I sh- I should be good.
There'll be one size you don't have. There'll be one size you don't have.
Probably.
Right, and that's what it's gonna come down to. We're gonna have to.
Yeah. Well, we, I mean, the wrong numbers, we need five hundred to cover our shortfall, should we put in another couple thousand, say twenty-five hundred? For that line item. It's reduced from ten thousand last year.
I wouldn't go below five.
I was gonna say five.
Keep it that, yeah.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, because you 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 mean. We're always gonna need to, you know, be continuously replacing, so we don't wanna just like go to zero and go to thirty.
Yeah, I mean, you replace. Two twenty-four inch culverts in a row and typically you're forty-five to fifty feet, you're gonna be right around five grand for just two crossings.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think five grand, right, is a minimum.
Well, let's put that in for now and we'll see how. Things go beyond that, and that's, is that the last one? A little discussion?
Actually, almost the last one, so if we can um talk about. Arfa as related to at the parking lot.
Okay.
Only because there was discussion about maybe putting gravel where they did the.
Yeah, where we had to dig.
So there's a little bit of money left over for the parking lot lighting project out of Arfa. Which needs to be spent. On that project or we have to give it back.
How much?
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah. Probably.
Doesn't have to be done this year, cause we have, we have to.
That's due by twenty-six, yeah.
Alright, yeah, I'd rather not put gravel down in here at the moment, just because it won't.
Push it in the grass.
But that would be a good place to spend it, you're putting some decent gravel and.
Yeah, I mean, at one point, we put. Millings from asphalt in here and it worked great, but unfortunately I had to disturb them and it made a mess. When I dug it up, so I think. You know, two, three loads of plant mix, three-quarter inch plant mix. Would definitely improve the driveway.
So Sarah, is there anything else that we? Should be spending on our part that is is a big one, the only one?
So it's just the parking lot and the only one that's locked is the FCC ones, but they've got until the end of next year. And the rest of that.
Okay, so if we turn the road budget um, on the agenda, we had reviewed the capital budget, Mike, we talked about. On our first. What was it, our first December meeting that will?
Yeah, so there's a, I need the timeline for a meeting, if we did on December ninth. It's uh this um. If we just like finalize those capital budget hearing. Chuck's gonna be wet away on the twenty-third, which is the. Um the second meeting right before Christmas. We were talking that maybe. We would not have a meeting there, but put. The warrant on, or the no checks on payroll.
Yeah, so the year end, all the year end stuff could get paid for, uh Ron's gonna be around.
Maybe what we're thinking is if we don't have a meeting on the twenty-third. But on Monday the twenty-ninth, do the last warrant for the year, just so that everything gets paid. And then. It's would be January thirteenth, which would actually be the public hearing for.
Okay.
The capital budget.
So that way we'd have a public hearing in time and get the capital budget done and.
That has to be warned and all that stuff.
Yeah. That's the one that goes over the like the seven year span or ten year span.
Basically take the numbers that you guys have put in.
And put some percent to it, right?
A little percent increase, yeah, yeah, okay.
So you you basically need to. Be satisfied with your transfers.
Yeah.
Budget. By December, we're thinking.
And then that way we can eliminate the meeting on the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Any other business we need to? Talk about tonight? I think we're good, huh? Alright, what time will you, almost seven o'clock, it's a little later than I thought we'd yell, but. Thanks, thank you all um. I think you made a lot of progress here. We done good. Okay. I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
My second, it's all in favor. Alright, it's unanimous.